Next on the agenda is an ordinance, proposed ordinance, municipality Monroeville amending ordinance 1443 for the purpose of regulating, establishing standards and specific criteria for oil and gas development, drilling and related operations, and repealing ordinance number 2430 and ordinance number 2437. Anyone here representing the applicant?
We have the draft ordinance that was put together by the solicitor and counsel. It's been publicized and we're just putting it out there looking for comments from
The audience.
Audience, residents, and it will be acted on next month's council meeting.
Anyone in the audience, can you come forward?
Hi, my name is Jay Wright. I do live in Monroeville. Probably most of you know me, good or bad. Either way, I have some questions about the ordinance. First of all, why did we change the ordinance from M2 industrial to S1 conservancy?
Planning Commission asked me that question also. I'm not really sure if that'd be a question to ask at the council meeting.
Oh, we're planning to.
Ask council members and the solicitor.
Because if you do industrial, we have industrial, but there's really no spots for them to do a well, okay? But an S1, there's a big piece. Okay, so, second question. Who owns the S1 in Monroeville?
Waste management.
Pardon me?
Waste management.
They own it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What do you think about the methane gas up there when you're going to drill a well?
I know there's wells, or I don't know what they call them, observation. They capture the methane now. They vent it out. So if there was going to be a well drilled there, it would go down through the existing membranes.
Okay, second, well, a question, another question. They're going to put it in, how do they phrase it, a pond of water? How can you do that in a waste management close to a dump? I thought that was illegal in Pennsylvania.
Well, any kind of impound area can be lined with a membrane.
But it still leaks. It's proven to leak all over the country. I mean, all you can do is pick up a newspaper almost any day of the week and you're going to find the leak. Actually, over in Ohio, they've got a bunch of leaks right now. They just fined the company, what, $10 million or something over there for leaking?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Why did we put induction, injection wells into the ordinance?
Again, that would be something to address council with.
Well, because there's no law in Pennsylvania that says you have to let an injection well come into your borough. There is about fracking. There's nothing about an injection well in Pennsylvania state law. So why would we approve something? That's almost like saying to a fracking company, "Come on down. Come on in." Just basic questions.
I'm not the one who drafted the ordinance. Again, you know, coming to the council meeting.
But the thing is, let me ask you this. If we decide to pass this on to council, we can then put a condition in to have a removal of the particular area on injection wells, correct?
You could certainly recommend that, yes.
Okay.
I'm just asking because you guys are going to either make a recommendation or not, probably make a recommendation. But either way, I know I have to ask council, but I have to ask you too, to be honest, because that's the only fair way to do this. And I don't understand why we're doing this the way we're doing it. Because it's like we're saying, "Okay, there's an S1 up here. There's a lot of land. You can put wells up here." And last question, did anybody see the paper a couple of weeks ago about super pads?
Yeah.
Did you look at it?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Did you read it? How many wells they can put in a super pad?
Is it 20?
I believe it's, what, 40 wells?
Okay.
They can build one pad, so you know. Put 40 wells, put an injection well into it to get rid of the wastewater, okay, and do all that. And would you like that in Monroeville? Would you like to be responsible for that in Monroeville? Because the noise, the fumes, everything going on is going to be astronomical. I'm sorry, I'm not trying to blame you guys. I'm just bringing up points. Thank you very much.
A lot of points, thank you.
If you could sign in, please.
I did sign in on this one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Lola Strong Keller. I live in Monroeville. And I had a chance as of last week to obtain the proposed ordinance. I did some checking separately because it was a little difficult to distinguish on the tables, Google Maps, and the way that the zoning and the legends of the zoning districts were. So I wanted to get some clarification and then finally with perhaps something that would be a recommendation for a condition. The Google Maps showed me in or near this S1 district, some parcels would vary in acreage. And I think the question was already asked, who, as to that entire S1 district, who owned it? I was trying to measure out precisely because there are residential areas, there is what appears, you know, to be some stations there that would be municipal. And I had about, well, three parcels totaling about 113-plus acres. And I understand, is it correct that the total S1 is 150 mile, 150 acres?
It's close to that, yes.
So, and 113 out of it appeared to be the municipality owned. Are you saying that it's co-owned or that the entirety of S1 district is falling underneath waste management?
As far as I know, waste management owns all that property.
And how does, what does waste management's relationship to the municipality? Are they, is this a contractual relationship with the municipality?
I can't answer that. I don't know.
Okay. Who could, who can answer that question?
Maybe one of the council members next week. I'm not exactly sure what you're asking.
Well, no, I was actually under the impression that because this, this usually, from my memory, when zoning is examined and goes before a body, it comes before the planning commission. The planning commission, and I know this in the past, has worked as a body to update the zoning ordinance. And in doing that, they work very closely with the zoning officer and building and engineering to know all of the iterative steps that bring you to a public hearing that propose an ordinance and propose the districts that go along with it. Two of those things were already proposed and I looked at the, some of the, the way that you could read, from the way that you could read that district map. I'm not sure how things line up. But I do think that there's a process that usually, by the time it comes before the planning commission, you've got some better answers on all of these questions. And I was expecting that tonight because this is, this would normally be the first course of bringing changes about in zoning. So I was surprised that we didn't have better representation of that. But nevertheless, I will say that for somebody to answer that question, I can't get to answer. Under the section that's considered definitions, section two of this proposed ordinance, and definitions underneath C is the inclusion of what is called a gathering system. And I'll let you look at that because there are a number of things underneath definition. And if you go a few pages here, you will see, I think it's under two, that's section three, section two.
Yeah, third page.
Do you see that?
Gathering, are you talking about the gathering system facility?
Gathering system, yeah. And I'm going to ask about that because I want to know gathering systems. Is this a catch-all phrase for, you know, implying that anything to gather fluids that either are fresh or backflow, such as ponds, would also include an injection well in this system? It seems to imply that. And I know you've all had it before you. Take a moment to look at that here.
Don't see a specific definition for injection well.
No, there is none in here, but it implies...
So it could be part of that definition.
Okay, so that's a possibility there. That's what it seemed like to me. Under section four are specific criteria and standards. And the specific criteria and standards goes on to have a subsection five. So you have to roll along there. And where the operator, and it says, "Shall," hire a hydrologist agreed upon by the municipality to conduct water testing. And under subsection G, this is on pre-drilling here, it's at the bottom of the page there, that particular page. And where baseline water survey requirements are mentioned, would this include the responsibility for testing, because it's testing a baseline of water and then serial testing after that baseline testing? So would that also include existing underground coal mines so that the bore holing be done down to that same 1,200 feet from the surface? Do you know that one?
I don't know that it would go that deep because most surface wells for water are not that deep.
Well, it outlines what shall be, the minimum setback distance, of course, shall be a certain number of feet. And then also under pre-drilling, it says, "Prior to drilling and post-hydraulic fracturing, the operator shall be responsible for testing all existing water supplies, surface and groundwater, within 1,200 feet of the surface location of the well." And what I am told, I'm not as familiar as others are of this area, is that there are coal seams throughout that area, how far down you may go, how far they may have coal mine drainage, and therefore water systems you may have to get down as far as it lets you. And it lets you 1,200 feet. So would that be the same, I would think that it would be the same 1,200 feet that you could drill down or bore down to see?
I don't know if that's a vertical distance or horizontal distance.
Well, you're drilling down.
Well, it could be, you know, 1,200 feet horizontally from the well also, not necessarily 1,200 feet deep.
Well, what we're looking at here, though, is pre-testing to any well pad that would ever exist, just going down into the ground and taking samples of where beds, bodies of water would be.
Sure.
So that would certainly include that one, I would hope. Let me go on. About the water testing, it seems that, it's pretty concise in that writing, but I see nothing about air quality. What about air quality baseline and then serial testing? And I don't see it addressed here. Wanted to ask about it. And there really are reasons to have ongoing, you know, the baseline and ongoing tests for several types of things that are very present in this industry. One of them is what they call fugitive emissions. Then there's vented emissions, and then there's combustion emissions. And they come from various processes during the cycle there. The fugitive emissions is the unintended leaks around the seals, around the gaskets of the operation. The vented emissions is that which is released to the atmosphere by design because you have to have venting. And then the combustion would be, as it sounds, the exhaust emissions from combustible sources like, you know, compressor engines. Those are very important, especially in an area that already has some methane present in the air from the landfill. That's a good point. You have water testing. It looks like it's pretty thorough. Do you have air testing? Do you see it here? Does anybody see it here?
No.
Okay. All right. It should be. It should be there. And that's a suggestion that you really do need to address that. And finally, I wanted to make a suggestion. The ordinance, it would not appear to include a section requiring something that I have seen with other entire zoning ordinances. And that is a 10-year master plan for the oil and gas operations to provide a view of what the future for the community with regard to seeing the total picture of what the oil and gas operations might bring. And for reference for this body, you should see the Pittsburgh zoning code 922 dot 12. There are some examples there that if you're going to have ongoing operations in more than one well pad, the community really needs to know what that total picture looks like. And it does exist. And it is one of those industries that you're going to need to see things in a long-term view. That's a suggestion, is to include in this ordinance, which I do not see, which would be a 10-year master plan. It could just simply be a statement saying one is required and then for the template of it, just see Pittsburgh's. And again, that's zoning code 922 dot 10, or dot 12, excuse me. And that's all that I had actually time for. And I...
I'd just like to make a comment.
Yeah.
I don't want to sit here and act tight-lipped. It's just that I believe it would have been nice if we were somewhat included. I know I wasn't. I don't know if any other member of the planning commission was briefed on the progress that was going on or what went into this ordinance. It would have been nice to have been, as I said, to be briefed and be included in on it. Or to have an engineer or a geologist or somebody present here to be able to answer your questions tonight. So I apologize for appearing that...
Thank you for mentioning that.
...not knowledgeable on this, but...
Yeah, thanks, Mrs. Woodhull, because I really think that this is the first, I mean, you know, look, I understand the nature of why the solicitor, municipal solicitor, may have wanted to bring this up because it must have been in October, I was asking, we were at that time discussing the school rezoning, and I said, "Well, you know, this really brings up another question," and that is the overall revamping, the long overdue revamping of the entire ordinance. I believe that this was an attempt, a hasty attempt, to try to address the things that were going to be maybe most vulnerable to the public, had we not addressed it in the entirety of the ordinance, which I assume the entirety of the ordinance, this is just the oil and gas portion of that. But in doing so, I realized there was the attempt to bring it down to one and create that S1 district, whereas you did not see that before. I certainly didn't see it in past zoning maps, but it's hard to know whether or not this actually is going to represent an updated one and whether or not this that you see on the map matches every single category on the table. Does that match every single category on the table?
The S1 category?
Does the entire zoning map that's presented as of the 4th of this month, that is the new one?
Okay.
The one that came out with this proposed ordinance. When you look at those districts on the map, do they match with the tables that describe the district? Is everything accounted for there?
There was a discrepancy, which we discussed prior to the meeting, where the legend wasn't matching up to...
I don't think they have seen that. The legend on the zoning map that's online matches...
Okay, but I'm saying what you gave to us last week, which we discussed previous.
Is there a zoning map that doesn't match the one that I was seeing on the internet, on the web?
Nope. This is the one that's on the website.
Yeah. That's the one that I had a copy of. I had to zoom in. And then I also had the ordinance itself and the tables that were in the back. I just want to make sure. Is that the final, does that match every category that you listed? Sounds like there was a category that was not matched.
There was, what we discussed, there was a, an application came before us that had listed as special S conservancy, and that was corrected. That was the gray sludge that was corrected.
Okay, okay. All right. And I guess that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Tom Hennington, President of Monroeville.
Did you sign in?
I'm signed in.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few comments on the ordinance. If you look at the definitions, you will find that there's a definition of storage container. There was a question before about ponds. But that definition of storage container, I don't have the ordinance right here, so I can't quite quote it, but it appears to refer to things like steel containers for containing liquids. But nowhere in the ordinance itself is there use of that definition. And I'm wondering if really the reason for defining storage containers as above-ground steel containers kind of leaned on the idea that we should not have ponds in the ground. The industry is moving towards using above-ground containers in part because you can see if they are leaking. And so I'm going to suggest that the ordinance not allow for in-ground storage vehicles. The other question here is that the current ordinance is 2437, which allows for wells anywhere in every zoning district of the municipality. And under that ordinance, a number of wells have been drilled in Monroeville. The ordinance goes back to 2008. And at that time, there was kind of a confrontational discussion about the sale of drilling rights in Monroeville parks. And now I understand have a number of wells in the parks. My question is, what happens to the wells under the current ordinance, under this proposed ordinance? Are they going to be non-conforming?
Correct. They would become existing non-conforming.
So Monroeville having sold the lease rights, the oil driller, if they place themselves in the conservancy district, could try to reach them underground. But they wouldn't actually be able to go into the parks and produce new wells. The old ordinance, 2437, also has a number of provisions about keeping track of existing wells. There's a provision in there that yearly there has to be a review of the operation. But I don't see anything like that in the new ordinance. Has there been any thoughts about including that? What happens once a well is approved? Does Monroeville have any oversight over it?
I wouldn't think so. I think it'd be regulated by the state.
But if you read the, yeah, of course, but wouldn't it be worthwhile? Section 306 dot 7 in the old ordinance reads, "Once a year, during the anniversary month of the site plan approval, the planning commission will review site compliance and performance. Recommendations will be forwarded to council as to whether the zoning permit should be extended for another year." It would seem to be a good idea to have some oversight because, you know, there are likely to be compliance issues. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
My name's Madeline Everilla. I live in Monroeville. I signed in over there. Thank you. I live within about a half mile of where you want to do this drilling. I'd like to know where all of you live. Do you live anywhere near there? I know where you live. Do you?
I do not, no.
Okay, well...
I do not.
So it's probably not going to be affecting your land, your water, your gardens, the noise level, the air you're breathing, right? It is affecting us and our neighbors. And waste management already has an impact on our life. It has changed how the water moves through our property. My husband's family has lived there for over 70 years, so we've seen a change in the topography of that property. And I'm wondering about this whole process. My question is, I thought we were coming here to hear about an ordinance that you were considering, that was then going to be put out for a public meeting and then taken to the council. Am I misunderstanding the process?
This is the first step...
Looks like everybody looked at you because you've got that green shirt on.
This is the first step. The public hearing will be on the Thursday meeting for a council.
Okay, so, and then the council will vote on it at the next meeting?
Don't have a public hearing.
Don't have a public hearing.
And it'll get moved to the voting meeting on Tuesday if council decides to move it.
Okay. I want to know how, none of you are able to answer the questions that have been asked of you this evening. How do you move this to the council without being able to answer the questions on the ordinance?
We haven't done it yet.
Isn't that your job?
We haven't moved it to council yet. I mean, there's no...
Okay. Because, you know, I went to the meeting where they were talking about seismic testing.
Right.
And Huntley and Huntley stood there and told me, "We have no intention ever of drilling, ever, ever, don't be worried about it, in Monroeville." Do you own your mineral rights? I'm like, "What the heck are you talking about?" Sure enough, here we are looking, I will bet Huntley and Huntley wrote this, not anybody, without some, a lot of input from someone who's done a lot of drilling, and that would be them in Monroeville. We all know that. So my question is, why does the ordinance include the testing and the well site, I mean, the impact, I'm sorry, the existing condition of the area prior to passing this ordinance? Shouldn't you know what the conditions are before you pass an ordinance to affect it?
Well, just because the ordinance is passed doesn't mean anybody's going to drill there. Before any drilling, you need to establish what the water quality is and what's going on on the site. That way you can track it.
Who's determined what water quality is acceptable? What if I don't like it?
It doesn't matter if you accept it or not. They just need to determine what it is to create a baseline so that they can tell if there's any changes.
Why don't they do that before they pass an ordinance, know what the baseline is?
Because it may, somebody may never drill there. Why do it?
Why don't we have this in Rayville Park, this drilling site, the new park?
Is that where you want it?
No, I don't want it in Monroeville at all. I mean, I don't want it in Monroeville. And I really don't want it in my backyard. And you are literally talking my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. And I don't know, is Pickcarr involved in this at all because you're coming up through their, it looks like they're planning on coming up through their access road.
It's not Pickcarr.
It's not Pickcarr?
No.
No, it's just over the hill from Pickcarr, which is, do we not have to, as neighbors, take them into consideration or not?
I think one of the reasons the area that was chosen for the ordinance is because it's already an existing disturbed area for the landfill. So there's already a lot of truck traffic and noise.
It is a disturbed area. And it's an area that disturbs the neighborhood. And now you want to make it more disturbed. There's an entire coal mine that runs along there. How is, how can you drill or allow an injection site where there's mines currently? It doesn't make sense. I mean, from what I know of injection wells, I guess, is what they're calling fracking, they're going to move that ground. And it's already susceptible to that. So I'm questioning how you can push this forward. I would recommend you don't. I don't think you have enough answers or enough information to do it.
And just procedurally, whether we recommend it or deny it, it moves on to council regardless. Only way it stays here is if we table it, and then it goes nowhere. It just stays here and we continue talking about it.
So please table it. I know there's probably more information, I mean, really, this is not enough information to make a...
But to really get any action taken, you know, positive or against it, it has to move on to council. We can't, I mean, we're just a recommending body. We don't...
And what is your reason for wanting to table it?
Pardon me?
What is your reason for...
I don't think there's enough information available to us. You're not answering the questions. There are much more detail than mine.
I would imagine at the council meeting, there will be, you know, plenty of people here to answer your questions and be more informed on it than what we are.
Why didn't they show up here? Are you just not a functioning body? Is that, I mean, why weren't they here tonight? They certainly must have known this was going to be on the table. Why is it our engineer here? I mean, really, if they have so little interest in it, why is it being pushed forwards? Don't we have an engineer we pay here in Monroeville?
He reviews land development plans and subdivision plans. I don't know that they would have any qualifications, review, fracking.
Well, we probably have a geologist that would be able to answer questions as far as...
Not a geologist. Garvin Ballard.
Geotechnical, I'm sorry.
Technical.
Geotechnical.
Drilling is completely different.
I don't know. Pardon me?
With what I was saying too, I would really encourage you and everybody else who's had comments tonight to make sure that you... comments tonight to make sure that you come to the, you know, the council meeting to express your concerns, because then it will fall on better ears than ours.
Trust me, we'll be there. We'll be there, try to get our neighbors there. Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Mike Bear, and I live on 136 Ridgeview Drive. I can kind of see the writing on the walls. I think this thing is going to end up passing one way or the other. I am not a fan of the hydraulic fracturing industry. Pretty much, I'm not sure exactly how much of the history of all of this that you guys This was really come together, this was a couple technologies that came together, and was allowed to come together through the, what is known as the Halliburton loophole, which was pushed through legislation by then-Vice President Dick Cheney. The Halliburton loophole exempts the natural gas industry from the Clean Air Act of 1963, the Clean Water Act of 1962, and the Safe Drinking Water Act of 1974. So this industry as an entire whole does not have to pay any attention to the water quality and the air quality that they are affecting around them. And that in itself is scary and dangerous. The fluids that they use, while they are 99% water, the things that they add to them are things like benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylene, which are all volatile organic compounds, which are dangerous to the human body. Like I said, I realize that this is probably going to pass and probably going to get pushed through because it's just sort of the nature of the beast. My request to you guys is that you make this, or at least your panel recommends this, to be as limiting as possible. If this is an instance where we have to pass a bill because something has to be on the books, we have to allow them to be somewhere, we can't just kick them out of the entire township, I understand that, but please make this as limiting as possible. Make this so limiting that it no longer becomes profitable for them to want to conduct business in the municipality. We allow them, we just keep it so tightly regulated, because this is a very dangerous industry. This is an industry that is working at depths and working underground where it's very difficult for them to prove that they had any impact. And we've seen this all over the place. We've seen this endemic Pennsylvania, we've seen this through Colorado, through Texas, through all sorts of the United States. And they've come in and they've destroyed water and land and air in areas. So my request to you guys is that what you recommend is extremely narrow and very limiting. It's got to allow them, I understand that, but just put the reins on that industry as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
My wife has more experience up here than I do, but I'm Dave Hipperla. I live on Thomas Street. The house that she referenced was my family's house. We've been associated with that house. Let me sign in first.
Thank you.
Okay, the house, like I said, my family has been in that house since 1939, okay? The house itself goes beyond 1880. I have, myself, know that yard since the mid-'50s, 1950s. I know that the water tables, just in what waste management has done, has changed tremendously. The yard has never been wet. The last four years, three, four years, the water tables have changed already so drastically that it's like a sponge. A week after it rains, I've had to put drainage, drainage pipes in to try and prevent it from doing damage down on the porch and other, in the garage, you know, it's ridiculous. So the fact is, is that my yard has, one, a drainage pipe from the mines up there that are sulfured. I have a spring there that was used when the house was a farm. I cannot imagine that any survey can be doing justice when they do any type of fracking testing to account for the water, for the changes in the water levels and the whole water table in that area. You know, we're up pretty close to the top. I remember when that airport was an uncontrolled airport up there, not owned by the, not owned by waste management, not owned by the previous people who owned the dump up there, okay? We know, I think we all know, if you've been in Monroeville in any period of time, that houses along Johnson Road back there, that they've had significant problems, that they've had to be bought and condemned, torn down. Also know that, you know, you said this doesn't affect Pitt Karen. Well, that may be true, but I also know that the Monroeville Pitt Karen Gun Club was taken out of there because the dump was expanded over that area. You know, so it does affect the area, okay? Reasons for tabling? Just, you know, fracking's bad. And, you know, I think anybody who actually thinks about it knows that. You look at different surveys, different studies of wells, they don't even have a complete listing of how many wells there are in Pennsylvania, and the fact is, they all leak. I've seen reports that have said that within five to 10 years, all of them leak, you know? They don't take care of, they don't take care of the leakage that comes from the wells themselves, you know? Let's see. Oh, and as Mr. Bear was just saying, an idea of how much, how much is pumped down into water when they use the water for fracking? Everybody knows from general science that a regular gallon of water weighs approximately eight gallons. Fracking water weighs upwards of 15 to 17 pounds a gallon. That's a lot of, that's a lot of material that's put into it, okay? So I'd really like to see, I'd really like to see some serious consideration of tabling it, because it's just bad for Monroeville, particularly bad for that area. Because I can't imagine how you can possibly check what's going on in the water. I'm sure I'm going to be outside at 1,200 feet, so, you know, nobody's really going to care, apparently, from the way this is written. I thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Dill, I have two more questions if you don't mind. Paul, who's our inspector for the dump?
Tim Dayton.
Pardon me?
Tim Dayton.
How often does he inspect the dump?
Uh, pretty sure...
Does anybody know?
I'm pretty sure every day. I know he goes out there every other Saturday. I mean, he comes in on weekends to go out to keep an eye on the dump. I'm pretty sure he goes out there every day.
Okay. One more question. Can Monroeville change any other zoning areas to S1 conservancy? Can conservancy be changed to S1 conservancy?
Anything could technically be rezoned if it, you know, goes through the process.
So all someone has to do that owns, let's say, a conservancy plot of land is come in and request an S1?
They could, I mean, chances of getting approval...
It would have to be approved by...
Yeah, I mean, it's not...
Hey, guys, I'm from Monroeville a long time now. Come on, I understand the right way, and I understand what happens here. So, most people get what they want, especially...
I don't know, I think we've had four rezoning requests this year.
Recently, yeah.
And most of them from churches.
And only one has been granted so far.
So far. One from the school, and I know at least, what, one or two from churches?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, but that isn't private property owners that own big plots of land that don't live in Monroeville. I'm asking because I have some near me.
Jim Rutter came in with the rezoning. He owned, you know, Rutter's, he owned 80 acres or something up there, and it was, Rutter's the top 22 before he dropped down to Marysville.
They were rezoning 42 acres. They asked for, wasn't that 42 acres to be rezoned?
It's a fairly large plot up there.
I'm asking because I have two big plots by me that nobody lives in Monroeville, but they're owned by people that live out of Monroeville. And I know, I specifically know one of them wants a well, because he went to the people that live there and said, "We'll give you royalties if you'll not complain."
Well, they wouldn't be the only ones that have a say in it.
Well, I understand that, but we also understand politics. And I'm not being smart, and I'm not picking, you guys are in a bind.
And the rezoning really has to follow the comprehensive plan. If it doesn't, then it couldn't be or shouldn't be rezoned.
We don't follow the comprehensive plan in Monroeville.
And let me just...
It hasn't been followed very much since I've lived here.
Let me just say this, no matter what, we can't ban, Mr. Bear brought up a good point, we cannot outright ban fracking.
I know.
At some, it has to be allowed in one of the zoning districts.
I understand.
So essentially, what you're asking is, could somebody, anybody could request a well and just say, "I want this rezoned to this zoning district because this is where I, this is the zoning district that I can build a well on." So, I mean, it's...
Well, that was my original question. When they put in a temporary zoning ordinance, it was, I think, M2 industrial? Well, there are M2 industrial areas, but none big enough land to really put a well. So you're meeting the state requirements without giving them a place to put it. By doing it in S1 conservancy, we're saying, "Hey, we got this big plot of land on top of this hill, let's come in and drill some wells."
And Mr. Red, we also asked that question, and we were not...
Okay, I'm not blaming you guys. I understand where it comes from, and I'll be at the council meeting asking Paul the same questions. I'm sure he'll have answers by then, okay? But I'm just saying, and I know you're in a bind. If you table this, and somebody comes in and asks for a permit, you're also in a bind. So it's kind of, like he said, you need to put restrictions on it that everybody's brought up and more, so that at least it's very hard or controlled. That's only my thought.
But it's the people who wrote the ordinance that are the ones that are going to put the restrictions on.
That's Mr. Ratcher.
Well...
Mr. Ratcher works in the oil and gas industry. He used to work for an oil company. I also suggested that they brought another attorney in, but that was obviously vetoed. And I know you guys weren't in on the writing of this ordinance, and I apologize, okay? But the problem is, we're the people that suffer. If you, if a well goes up there, and we all know, once this is done, there's going to be a well in Monroeville somewhere, especially there. It's on the top of a hill. Have any of you read about the, you know, the noise and the air pollution and the water pollution and all of it? Because it's really bad from a well. And I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying, we've got a problem, and we need to make it as tight as we can, and I don't think it's being done that way. I know you need to pass an ordinance, but I think you need an ordinance that puts more supervision into it than less. And I still don't know why they put an induction well, an injection well, in the ordinance, because that's not mandatory by the state. No way, shape, or form, I checked. But it's there. Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board members, what's your pleasure?
If we pass this, make a motion to pass this to council with removal of the injection well and with input from, I don't know how to word this, that there will be people there that will be able to answer the questions, unfortunately, and it's embarrassing that, as I said, we weren't involved and we can't, I can't answer them, so, and I don't know how much anybody else from the planning commission knows. So table it, I think would just be, you know, it's...
Yeah, but I think...
They're recommending denial, so that as it's written...
I think if we table it, though, it gives the municipality the opportunity to maybe sit with us as a group to answer some of those questions, which...
Well, that would be ideal to have the professionals here, whether it's our geotechnical engineer and, and as you said, Tony, that would be, that would be ideal, but I don't know that...
Because I'll be honest, with some of the questions that were raised, I wouldn't feel comfortable making a motion either way, without having some of those questions answered.
Right, and I agree with you.
And I think we, as a group, a recommending group, are owed that. You know, whether Mr. Ratcher is involved, since he had some authoring portion of this or all of it.
Are you making that motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion to table it.
And I would second it.
Sheriff, roll call, please.
Mr. Dill?
Aye.
Mr. Biondo?
Aye.
Mr. Marganti?
Aye.
Mrs. Woodhull?
Aye.
Mr. Picusa?
Yes.
Any other business to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.